Six thirty-four.
Yes, you did. Stand corrected.
We'll call the school committee meeting to order. It is March 7th, 2016. The first order of business is approval of our minutes from February 1st and 22nd. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 1st?
No, just February 22nd. You're probably looking at the policy agenda. There you go.
Yes, I am. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes from February 22nd? I'll second that. Any discussion, correction, edits, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have our awards and presentations.
Yep, and Simon could not be here this evening, but I think you write about him in my blog anyway. Simon Abbott, who is a 7th grader here at Granby Junior Senior High School, won the Granby Geography Bee. And he is going on to be in the state competition at the Elm's College on April 2nd. April 2nd? 1st. One of those. Anyway, April 1st, so we wish him all the best. He's a great kid. I had a great chat with him while I was trying to take his picture. Not only does he love geography, as I said, so I can just not have a GPS and put you in my car and it'll all be good, but he is hoping to become an Olympic speed skater. He's learning, he's training, I think, using inline skates at Mon Hoya College. He goes and he practices like four days, four or five days a week for a couple hours a shot. And he literally wants to be an Olympic speed skater, which I thought was pretty fascinating.
Which is pretty ironic, because he doesn't have to know where he's going since then. That's good.
Yeah, I asked him what his fascination was, and he just said that, you know, I just want to know about the earth and where people are and where things are, and so if you see something on the news, I said, do you ever have to go look something up? Eh, once in a great while, but most of the time I know where it is. It's really cool, so anyways, we wish him the best of luck, and maybe he'll win the states and be back.
Maybe we can have him some other time. Hopefully after he's done at Elm, Elm's College.
When is that, Ken?
April 1st. No full one. Second. It is my pleasure to introduce to you Barbara Byes and Carolyn Ritter.
Hello.
These are, the Harold Green School Foundation, every year has a Pioneer Valley Teachers of Excellence program. And so teachers are nominated by their peers in districts, and then they go through a process of being selected via their school councils. And Barb and Carolyn are two winners of the award this year for Granby. So congratulations. Both well deserved, both do a great job teaching, both contribute immense number of hours and time and whatever to the district. Barbara's always here, she's on committees all the time, she bakes all the time, and she's just, she's also like in professional development. Every time I turn around, she's at State and Workshops or whatever. She's a fabulous teacher, it's great to be in her classroom. Carolyn also is doing the virtual high school coordination for us this year, so she's piloting that and doing a lot in the life of the school outside of her regular teaching duties. So she's sort of in the newer teachers category. So the end of April, there will be a giant dinner at the La Cabe in Hoya for all of the award winners and their families and friends and whatever, to celebrate their excellence as teachers. So we are thrilled.
Congratulations.
So we wanted to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you both for everything they do.
Professional development is actually Jim's fault, because he's the one that got me started in it.
There you go, all right. I blogged about them, but now we have a picture to go with it. There we are, all right, great. Thank you both.
Thank you, congratulations. Barbara, thanks for continuing to do the jar groupie.
Oh, love it, that's true.
People be winners. So are we gonna get to keep your phone when you leave? Because I think there are a lot of good pictures.
We'll have to, we'll all shift to the Google Drive, I'm sure.
Are they classified next one?
No, they are unclassified.
Not yet, not that way now.
Do we have your own private server? So next is our visitors' comments section. I don't see any visitors, so we'll skip to student representative report. Annabelle.
Can I have your autograph in, Bill? Number one, because you're famous now. Yeah, you are. My second question though is, when are you joining chorus?
I was in chorus.
Why not?
I'm just not.
I'm gonna have to hunt you down.
Can I know about that?
She's got a beautiful voice.
We already checked your schedule with chorus in it, so.
Great, I put it in there for you.
Oh, yeah, you forgot about that. Well, on Friday, the boys had their quarter final, I think, basketball game against.
Turners.
Turners.
I blinked. It was 68, 72, 56. And then tonight is the semifinals game at the Cage at UMass against.
Waybuck. Yep, that's Ms. Jordan's old school, so rivalry going on there.
She's not there supporting them, right?
No, she was supporting them.
Members of Hope will be participating in the Levercon Plunge in South Habley on March 13th, raising money for charity. And the middle school has the spring fling dance on April 29th. And this past weekend was at Granby Drama Club's The Dashably Dr. Deveraux. And it was a lot of fun, and we had a great turnout. 344 people, over four shows.
Wow, good.
It was the first musical on the Granby High School stage in over 20 years, so.
Nice, dang.
And Nurse March was phenomenal.
Is that all? Actually, congratulations to all of you guys. I was really impressed with that performance. That was, it was a lot of fun.
Absolutely.
So good job, congratulations to all of you. Thank you, Annabelle. And I know you have to leave and go to your other rehearsal, so feel free to do so. Okay, thank you. So we're gonna change the order of things a little bit. We have a visitor to talk about the recycling program, so we're gonna move you up.
Okay, I guess I talked, Arlene was.
I mean, that might be going down, but she was coming to basically present, since she was actually the one that has been.
Should we wait for her? I mean, we can't do that. We would just move you up.
Well, yeah, why don't you do something else, and then, but if she's not here in the next 10 minutes, we should do this, because I have a select board meeting.
Okay.
Presentation too.
Absolutely, so we'll start with, so moving to reports and recommendations. And let's see if we can do a few things from the top.
All right, A and B somehow got separated. They should be all one big happy A. I don't know how that happened, but it did.
Because I was gonna say, the A will never finish it.
I don't know what happened there, but anyway. And I'm gonna request that we table that, because the person who is doing the mentor program report has left to go to the cage. A lot of kids. And we'll bring it to you next time around.
All right.
Second item is, or it looks like it really is B, is grade 4 field trip request to the Mystic Aquarium on Monday, March 6th. The information is in your packet. I have reviewed everything, everything is in order. The federal motor coach safety reading report is satisfactory, so I recommend approval.
It's June 6th, right?
June 6th. June 6th. What did I say?
March.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion for the grade 4 field trip to Mystic Aquarium. Thank you. Second, Mary.
Yep.
Thank you. Quick question, I just couldn't understand what it is. Cost of trip per student is 1350, it says. And then cost per student in a separate estimated 30 to 35. I think that's the tickets to get into, I think that's the cost to get into the Mystic. Then you gotta factor in the. Also, one is for the bus, the other one is for Mystic?
Well, the aquarium is part of Mystic, the seaport.
Right.
So you get into the seaport, then get to the aquarium, so I think that's what the double tier is. So overall.
So how much are they paying, do you know, the students?
The total cost per student would be somewhere between 30 and 35, depending on how many kids go and the buses and all of that.
And it's sponsored by the PTO anyways? PTO is giving 500. That's it? Okay.
Yep.
I think the 1650 is for an adult.
That makes sense.
Yeah, 1650 is adult, 1350 is student, but I was confused where it says estimated 30, 35 dollars for per student. Okay.
It's just dividing up the cost of the bus.
We gotta cover around 1900 for the bus, but may have anyone going, so that sounds about right. In any event, I'm sure they covered all grounds and they're ready to go. So all in favor to approve the field trip, please say aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think probably we'll skip over the FY '16 budget update if we're, because it could be longer than 10 minutes.
Are we gonna do the policy?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So you have in your packet JKAA, which is the physical restraint of students policy. This is a second reading, so it's now up for a vote. This is the policy that has been designed to comply with the new restraint laws and regulations on the part of the Commonwealth.
So we already have it, we're replacing the current one with this one.
Correct, yep.
I'll make a motion to approve policy JKAA on the physical restraint of students. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, discussion? We have all the staff in each building, they're trained according to this?
We're working on that. You know, we've got a team of people who've been through the three day, making sure that everybody's up to speed. And then, as a matter of fact, I think all three schools by now have probably gone through the overview training that's in there. Now that I think about it, I think the last faculty meeting was a couple weeks ago, so.
So what are the major changes in this from what it was?
Basically, it is just to make sure that people are not using inappropriate methods to restrain students. It's got a little more clarity to it. I think in light of some recent cases in and around the Commonwealth of people inappropriately holding students or more, even more inappropriate using timeout or seclusion without, you know, someone, an adult present, that those items are two things that the new law will adopt to light.
So I assume we'll go over this in each building.
Yes, yes, I have.
With the changes.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All in favor of approving the updated physical restraint policy, please say aye.
Thank you. Would you like to go back to your other item? Arlene is here.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, we're good. Please, come on over.
We have copies of the report, I believe.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you very much, I apologize for being late. Very excited about this project, thank you for letting us proceed, as you did, and we said we'd get back to you within a day. I think the summary is self-explanatory. Things are great, the support is terrific in each of the schools, from the top to the custodians, to the principals. And the new wild card is John Sullivan coming forward, whom you are probably familiar with. So as I was doing my assignment, going through the schools, he was already, I think he came in November, and I went through in January. So he was going through doing similar things as I was doing, and then we met, which was great. I mean, I had planned to contact Waste Management anyhow, and he was working with Waste Management. So we got together, Jamie Fitzgibbons, John Sullivan and I, a week or so ago. And so we compared notes and reviewed what I learned from the principals review, but his sense was, he and Jamie, which is Waste Management, had already consolidated, cut back on some of the, or reduced some of the trash pickups and addressed some of the recycling issues on the backside of the building, saving the district money. Every time you reduce a pickup, you're saving money, so right on the same page with everything we were talking about. So very excited about that. The issue we've come up with right now, and it's not a big issue, it's a good thing, is, is he here by the way, council?
No.
Because I brought some stickers for him, and he could leave them.
Sure.
The whole introduction of single stream recycling, and if you live in town, which you must, if you're in school, you know what that is. The school had been doing dual stream recycling, and John, and some of the principals kind of liked the dual stream in the classroom, because the students, it was easier for the students to do that. But John feels very strongly, and as does Jamie, that they should go single stream throughout the system, which is perfectly fine. So we're just at the juncture of my, me going back to the principals and discussing what kind of bins they want in the classrooms that work for the students and work for the custodians, because the system is designed and has been working with the students participating very, very much. So they're pretty much doing all the recycling part of it. Custodians then bring it out to the back end of the building, so that's where we are.
All right, do you mind explaining single stream, dual stream for folks who will be watching this?
Sure, any resident in Long, in Long, in Granby, excuse me, who's having, getting curbside pickup with the town program, which is part of your tax base, is putting out their materials, their paper and bottles and cans, just in one container. Dual stream simply means paper and bottles and cans are two separate containers. So it should be the same materials, just in one container. And in the school, since all, since all three schools have been doing a great job sorting already in the classroom, every place I looked, they had, the blue bins, the blue recycling bins are all over the place, and by the teachers' desks in the hallway. And so the string, the material has been kept clean and separate, and so now they just have to put it together. So we're talking about an education system, so everybody knows what the words mean in the system, the school system. And since the students are doing it at home, it should be simple to do that. But we want to do it right, we want to sort of launch it together, once we get all the equipment. And the equipment would just be more containers for the classrooms, maybe a certain color, we're talking about color coordination, signage. And again, you don't have to pay for anything, it's all gonna be covered either by the grant or by some free equipment outlet we have from the state. So it's, in my mind, it's a win-win. And the best thing from my perspective, as somebody who's worked with a lot of schools in Western Mass, it was the attitude among the principals and the custodians in all three of the schools. It was just refreshing, it was supportive, it was, it was great. You can only get better in terms of the mechanics of it, moving through the system, because the backend will be nicer, the signage will be clearer, you know, give us a chance to refresh with the students and the faculty, again, this is what we're gonna do. So we're hoping, you know, as soon as we can, as we can, as I can meet again with the principals and discuss what size they want in the classroom for their students, we'll move forward, if that's okay with you.
So when you say education, you know, educating everybody, how would you go about that? Is it kind of top-down, educating principals, and then who would educate teachers? Or is it like a presentation?
To me, that's the ideal, ideal way, is be sure that the principals, because they seem to have a, it's not such a huge building, so they can't, they can't communicate, have the principals and the teachers learn how to do it, maybe they teach the students. We're happy to go in to cafeteria and make announcements if that, if that works. I think it would be, my thought would be to have it come, talk to the principals and see what they want us to go back to the education. Is it an assembly, an announcement, whatever works in their particular school. It's not gonna be hard, because they're already doing this stuff.
And they're doing the dual stream.
Yeah.
I would think that single would make it even easier, just you don't have to worry about what you're putting where.
Right, and some of the, some of the schools are doing a little bit more aggressive bottle and can stuff in the classrooms than the others, but with the proper containers. I mean, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be fine. The mentality, the atmosphere is fine for it, there's no resistance.
Somewhere in your, in your report, you mentioned that we actually had a pretty strong tradition of doing that. In fact, there was composting program and this and that at one point. Probably that still resonates with everyone in our school system, or with a lot of folks in our school system, and there might be some.
That's what it felt like. I mean, the only thing that, that didn't get continued from the program that was here five, six, I don't remember how many years ago it was due.
I have no idea.
Was they, they had done a pilot composting program in the system. And it was all funded by, when the landfill was open and Waste Management was throwing money at the town. I mean, that was all part of that, which was great. But that's the hardest, most complicated thing to do, and the fact that everything else is working well, to me, I think that's a win-win. You know, down the road, you know, the custodians and John Sullivan want to proceed with some more composting, that's fine too. But at this point, it's just great to be capturing as much paper and as much bottles and cans. They're working with Chartwell in the kitchens, they're getting the big cans and the cardboard out of the cafeteria system, which is terrific. The only thing we've talked a little bit about and we're working on is maybe milk carton recycling in the cafeteria, pouring off some liquids and doing the milk cartons, and we're gonna just work out the logistics of that.
We used to do that.
And I see you also have for the renovation and the new project, were you using reusable trays? Do we have that in the?
Oh, throwaway stuffs.
I know it's throwaway stuff now, but has that been budgeted in the, in the renovation or the new build with, with the dishwashers?
My experience with new buildings, and that you're doing, is that there's a, there's a timeframe to where you can put in the request for equipment. It's called FFE budget.
We're not quite there yet.
Okay.
And, and, but this kind of stuff, the recycling equipment, trays, and when you're designing it, I'm not sure the design is finalized yet. You want to be sure, those of you who are on school building committee, I'm sure some of you maybe are.
Yeah. We are.
Emphasize the dishwasher.
That's gonna be my question, is that.
They always put them in the.
Can we keep this in mind when, when you get to that next step? And also, any idea on the cost of these reusable trays? Because I can't imagine it's going to be inexpensive, that's a lot of trays.
No, it's not expensive, though.
It's not expensive.
And you're reusing them, you're not buying stack full all the time. And you know what else you do when you're reducing the trash at the back end of the building, big time.
Right. No, I like, I think it's a great idea, that's why I'm saying we need to jump ahead of this before, because if we're not jumping ahead and being proactive to make sure it's on a budget, it's gonna get forgotten, and then it's gonna be, how are we gonna pay for it later on?
Yeah, I think we're talking, you know, you're talking millions, I don't know what your budget is for your building, but it's gotta beat millions. These trays are hundreds. I mean, you're in the, I mean, it's, it's a blip in this kind of, with that, in these kind of systems that they're building. The dishwasher will be much more expensive.
Yeah, I would imagine styrofoam trays are pretty expensive.
Yeah, and I don't know who pays that when you're outsourcing.
Chartwell's supposed to.
Buys that, yeah, so it's a.
But ultimately, aren't we paying for it?
They're still building it.
It's built into the cost.
Right.
And you know, sometimes they, I will tell you this, because I've worked with other school systems that are in this position. It's, it's nice to mention to Chartwell, as you were having conversation with them through your management of their system, that this is, this can be done and is done in other systems without having to hire extra personnel. It's not hard to, the way that the dishwashers are set up to go right through. And they've got MCMO and grown up out of it. It's not a reality, at least in other systems, but.
And we're small, so I mean, I would think it's not a big deal.
Right, because when the, when the trays are being washed, it's not when they're serving the food, it's every.
Right.
It's a timing kind of thing. I mean, you want, I hope, I always hope that when they're built, when the new buildings are being designed, that the facilities people are involved, that John Sullivan would be involved in a conversation at some point during the process about the back end of the building and about when people are returning, any recycling in the cafeteria, so that there's a, there's a place for it, and in the hallways, you know, sometimes the architects get carried away with this gorgeous stuff and these round drawers, and they forget that you maybe need a little nook here or there, because the school recycles.
We just, we just got the vote this past week.
Yeah, congratulations.
So, thank you. So there's a lot of conversation that we need to have, but it's absolutely part of that conversation. All the details related to equipment and everything else will happen in the next several months.
Yeah, the thing I advise, I'm working actually with Pittsburgh right now, they're rebuilding to come. And they keep, what they do is they keep putting off the, we don't need the FFE yet, we don't need that information yet. They're telling the recycling people, and I said, you have to have that list ready to go, because they're gonna tell you on Monday they need it Tuesday. If you don't have it, you're gonna lose out on it, even with pennies, but it's just, it's, you know, if you want special recycling bins, you can put, this is appropriate as part of that budget, it's appropriate part of that budget. You may not need that, because we're redoing stuff right now, but you might want, you know, and you might want certain bins in certain areas, you might want something different for the cafeteria, you definitely want the trays.
So in our current structure, we don't really, oh, I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, if we're going to have a recycling program, we need to have a recycling program. Not 60% recycling program, and so now's the time to do it.
Well, one of the things I would propose, which I haven't talked this quack yet about, or you guys about, is some of the school systems at your level, at the, at the school committee level, the state likes to present you with maybe a draft recycling policy for the schools. And some of them say no styrofoam, you play the role possible. I mean, it sort of gives you a, so then when you, somebody comes in and says, I want it to be your cafeteria service, Chartwell, whoever else it might be, well, we don't want, you know, we really don't want you to use that, don't even think about it, from the get-go, this is, this is our policy. We don't talk about that tonight, but that's something that is kind of nice. You're, you're doing everything, it's great. You don't have to have that, but it can give you, can help moving forward as people change.
Actually, going forward, if we're not gonna have styrofoam, we don't need a policy to actually enforce that.
That's perfectly correct. You need to sort of think back and say that, and it's fine. Pushing, I'm just saying, there is, there is a vehicle there, if you want continuity with that.
So it being, it's all cost neutral.
I think it's getting better than cost neutral. Because of what Jamie and John are doing at the back end of the building, I believe they've, they've cut down almost in half some of the trash things. Don't forget, they're charging you as if the trash containers are full, that's how they price it.
Right.
And, you know, if somebody's looking and they're saying, well, they're not full, we can pick them up at this often. You've saved, talking about picking up, let's on-call for vacations, on-call in July and August, all that's money in your pocket.
That's great.
I'm very, very pleased with the, with the cooperation from Waste Management, John's great.
Well, thank you for your work, we really appreciate it.
We'll keep you posted as it goes up forward, and we'll, you know, we'll let you know when we're gonna launch.
Great. Thank you. Thanks, Joe, for your. Joe, thank you. All right, thank you very much, both of you, thanks for coming.
Very much.
And thank you for the report. So we're gonna continue the tap dance, just we're going back to the course. All right.
F417 budget, I spent the vast majority of my day today just kind of going through all of the salaries, making sure that everything is correct, making sure that things are done, so.
Deanne's kind of disappointed, but she doesn't have to move, you know, with the screen, so.
No, I'm low tech tonight, because, oh my, my favorite way.
Good thing we didn't have this before the recycling program comes.
Time then, just right. There you go.
Thank you.
So this is just the summary page, I can talk to you about any of the other detail behind it. I do have the detailed stuff, I just didn't get enough time to print everything out for you ahead of time, so. What you notice in some of the lines, just basically, we've accounted for lane changes and step increments and those kinds of things. I've also put in, in terms of some of the salaries and the different parts of the budget for some of the requests that the principals and others have made for additional personnel in there. So you'll see some changes in some of the personnel lines as a result of that. Probably the biggest thing that you're gonna want to look at is on the second page. the biggest thing that you're going to want to look at is on the second page, where I put together the estimated FY seventeen, Chapter Seventy funds, which shows, I took the wrong number down. I guess I'll have to fix that. This is like halfway. You'll see some green boxes. It's kind of in between those green boxes. You can see that the four million, five fifty seven, eight fifteen was the, actually, the FY sixteen, Chapter Seventy money. You can see across the estimated, Chapter Seventy is four million, five seventy three, three fifty five. The estimated town contribution is minimum, minimum net school spending, say that five times best, and the three oh five override that they add to that every year. You'll notice that right now, in terms of in all funds, we are at an increase of about six point eight percent.
For John Sullivan's funds. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate you dropping something. Thank you.
And the estimated town increases is nine point seven percent at this particular juncture in time. We're still looking on some of the numbers. One of the things that, some of the things that, as you heard earlier, John is looking at trying to reduce the cost of trash pickup, and so that has not yet been reflected in these numbers. David has also done some outreach to Comcast about switching our phone system over, which could potentially save us a fair amount of money. So, he's, you know, that could back that cost down, but obviously, we're going to have to have, if we're going to live by the minimum net school spending plus the three oh five and change, we've got a way to go to close the gap.
And this is dramatically different than what we've seen last time?
Yeah, I hadn't populated the numbers at the bottom, but it, it has because of just going through all of the salaries and making sure that...
So, half a million dollars, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So...
And we're already over, so we have some, some work to do.
Yes. So, obviously, we're going to have to, you know, begin the, the belt tightening process as well.
Yeah.
So...
So, that actually, again, just brings back the question around the zero-based budgeting. What we have seen, and I know that we had a brief conversation around that, whether or not any one of those line items allow us to prioritize and say, "You know what? Some of these things maybe, now that we know close to item by item expenditure, maybe we can say some of the things are not a priority." And also, as we were having the conversations last time, if I'm off, just correct me, but it seemed like we express whatever we think we're going to need in terms of additional resources, additional staff. Maybe it's time now, you start looking at all those, and that's what we're going to do, right?
Right. That's, that's the next step with the senior leadership team, is to present the gap to them and then to say, "Okay, we're going to have to begin some belt tightening, and where are we going to do that? What do we absolutely need? What do we need to take off the table, either totally or reduce in some way, shape, or form?" And as some of these other numbers continue to come in, you know, where are we going to go with that? Couple of other things, too, in the area of pupil services, there is an increase in that line, and the reason for that right now is that we are looking at the potentiality of two other students going out of district at a cost of approximately thirty thousand dollars each. Where we're really lacking in programming here is around meeting the needs of kids with social, emotional, learning issues. So, when we have a child who has that particular constellation of issues that is in front of him or her, we really have no choice but to send them out. So, the two that we're looking at are in that same category. So, Mary Burks, who has done this work before in a couple of different settings, has brought in somebody to take a look at this with us and the potentiality of establishing a program to meet those kids' needs right here at Granby Junior Senior High School. So, it would not be necessarily reducing tuitions, but it would be redirecting the funds here, and by doing that, we could service more kids. We could have kids who might potentially go out, stay with us. It's a program that, you know, we've taken a look at, a small group of us has, has met with them, and what the program is about is, is having flexibility for kids. So, for kids who need to be in there all day long, yep. For kids who only need to be in there part of the school day, they can be in with the general population for parts of the school day, but there may be other parts of the school day when they really need to have a more therapeutic environment, and how do you do that? When you send a child out to a program, you really don't have that opportunity to be able to sort of flex in and out of the general population. It's pretty much, the whole program is in a therapeutic environment. Not every kid needs that, and there are a couple of, of kids who probably, that we're sending out now because we have nothing for them here, who could probably be part-time in the mainstream, but we can't access that right now. And what we're finding is that the reflection room that was established here is being used for some kids who could probably better benefit from having a therapeutic reprimand, so.
So, based on what I'm hearing, it seems that there will be a cost to establish that one as well. Is it going to be easy for us to determine what the net is going to be?
It would probably be a zero.
It will be? Okay.
Yeah, zero-sum game. We're probably looking at, for the program, we're probably looking at somewhere around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have the program here. Now, we've got two kiddos that are out, two that are about to go out, so there's two hundred thousand dollars right there, plus they have, you hire your own teacher who is dual-licensed, both regular ed and special education, so that kids who are on IEPs or not can partake in this. So, there's, it is a broader array of kids that, whose needs can be met, so.
Isn't there something like the circuit breaker, that just after a certain point, when you reach a certain percentage of your budget, it just kicks in and supports the...
That, that's a moving target. Every year, a circuit breaker is different, how much the percent is. It's, you know, right now, it's in the low seventies, but I've seen it dip as low as the low sixties. So, that kind of is part of the whole budget.
Well, sixty, sixty thousand.
No, it's sixty-something percent of your budget, of your extraordinary cost. So, it doesn't cover all of your extraordinary costs, and only costs, covers some of them. So, we have used, again, that circuit breaker as kind of a placeholder for tuitions as well.
Because what the state is saying, basically, we say we care about the, the children, and we have no problem doing that. But what the state is saying, you're on your own. Just for the most part, you're going to have to take care of this, but there has to be something that, that, that addresses these specialized situations.
Right. I have to tell you that this is a huge problem statewide.
Yeah.
Dealing with kids with social, emotional, learning issues. This has been the thrust of M A S S's workshops for the entire year, starting with the Executive Institute. The mid-winter conference was about that. The spring conference is going to be about that. It's a huge issue across the Commonwealth. There are more and more kids who are coming to us just really struggling in this arena.
Does the...
And when they struggle in this arena, they can't access the academic curriculum, so they have to have a therapeutic piece. And the model that we're looking at was developed by a fellow by the name of Ross Green, who actually spoke at the winter conference.
I've done his trainings.
Yeah. He's phenomenal. He's phenomenal, and it's a great model.
Collaborative.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Problem-solving.
Yep. And it's all about kids having what he calls lagging skills, that when they are met with adversity, or met with a disappointment, or met with something, they don't have the skills to cope with it. So, they resort to other behaviors and anger and all of that stuff that you don't want kids to, to access. So, his thing is, why, what are the lagging skills? What's the tipping point that brings a child into a place where they don't have the ability to cope, and how can we help them cope with those things? So, putting a program in place could have a lot of benefits for not just four or five kids, but could have benefits for a whole lot more than that. So...
Yeah.
You know, I think it could be a win-win. We're still in, in discussion with the provider for this, and it is based on Ross Green's model, so we'll have a proposal probably by the end of March, early April, for you to think about, but just so you know that that's on the radar, so, you know.
Yeah, and that's in addition to what we're seeing right now?
No, it would be in place of some of the tuitions. We would just redirect them.
Okay.
Another thing that we're also looking at in terms of pupil services is, right now, we contract out for a behavior specialist for the little ones at West Street School for the most part, B C B A, and we're spending about sixty-five thousand dollars, or projecting to spend about sixty-five thousand dollars for two days a week of consulting. I've been in some conversations with the Hadley superintendent, who's in a symbol or vote as us, and we're thinking about maybe together, we could hire a full-time B C B A who would be an employee or potentially three days a week for even maybe a little less than what we're paying to outsource for two days right now. Probably for Hadley, it would be two days a week of services for not much more than what they're getting for one contracting out. So, it could be a win-win for both districts. So, it would be just a case of figuring out who's going to hire, how the build-back is going to work, and all of that kind of stuff. So, T M S has done this before in districts, so I'll look to them to kind of help guide us through, but Hadley also uses T M S, so it would be a way certainly for us to share services with another district and probably get more services for the dollar than we get currently. So, that's kind of out there as well.
The West Street total that we're seeing here, is it inclusive of any of those things that we're talking about, or...
The West Street total?
Yeah.
Well, it's like almost three hundred thousand dollars more than this year.
Yep, that has to do with, there was a request for two extra teachers. It's all of the lane changes and salary steps that are in there as well. Couple of things, the all-funds budget, also in prior iterations of the budget, people who were paid by grants and school choice, those kinds of things were not included in the all-funds number. They were kept off to the side. So, what we've done is brought them into the school, into the all-funds number, and then if you look across, you can see where the offsets are.
Yeah.
So...
But since, in all-funds, the way I'm thinking about it, because the gap is going to be covered through grants, the better way of looking at it is looking at the L E A increases, right?
L E A to L E A. But again, we're looking at a couple of extra positions in there, you know, percentages of, we've brought in some extra O Ts and, and things like that that weren't necessarily thought about when we developed the last, this past year's budget, but have, we've had to bring in some extra services for the little, the little guys.
So, everything that was presented at the last school committee meeting is in here, by the way?
Yep, pretty much. I'm just going through and making some final tweaks to all of it. But this was, this was just for me to take a real, I just spent the whole day today just basically, Kathy, I'll tell you, I only emerged every now and then.
Come up for air with eyes crossed.
Came up for air every now and...
Yeah.
But just to really go through staffing with a fine-tooth comb and make sure everybody was in the right place, at the right percentages, offsets in the right place, and all of that kind of stuff, and then making sure that the extra personnel that people had asked for was also incorporated into this.
Now, we saw that was up quite a bit, too, right? They only asked for one teacher and half a parent, but it's up quite a bit here, if I'm looking at this right.
Yep. And again, you have to remember that when people did their needs-based budgets, their supply lines are also up, and there are increases in each one of these for technology. So, a lot of the, the increases in those numbers over last year have to do also with technology lines that are pretty hefty.
Do they, I mean, do they have their own line for technology?
Yes, yeah.
It's not here, though. High school, high school line shows, but the elementary lines don't show.
Yeah, it's because of the way the budget is currently put together in financial software. It's in the supply lines in the other two schools. It's not farmed out quite as large as it is in the high school budget. It's just the way the budgets will put, the program's been put together for the three schools. The high school has more lines than that.
And the supplies are broken down on the one we got a few weeks ago, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What, what was, what's under district, district-wide miscellaneous? Because that's up quite a bit, too. What's in that line?
Um, that's...
Seven, five thousand dollars or so.
That's some items that were in, that were coded under the high school's budget, which I have no idea why that was that way. Just take a peek.
District-wide miscellaneous.
Yeah. So, for example, there is a retirement buyback line, and it was coded under the high school for some reason. So, as we moved to soft write, it's going up into the district-wide line. It may get some transfers as, as buybacks get taken out to different schools, et cetera. There's a salary contingency in there that, again, was coded under the high school for some reason that I don't understand. And then there was also some contingency funds. You know, I know that Deanne had, had thought about, you know, what happens if something breaks down? What do we do? Do we have any contingency? So, I could put a contingency in there for some of that.
All right. I, I want to ask a couple of questions. I'm not a budget person, so this may sound really, just, you're all going to have to calm it down.
We'll bear with it.
No, it's all right. It's just complex stuff.
So, you're telling us not to laugh or anything? Is that...
No.
Okay.
Warning, you're ahead of...
No, it's complex stuff. Go ahead.
So, what was the goal for us to go to this zero-based budget?
Because people literally had lost sight of what their lines were about.
Okay.
Because we had spent so much time backing into a line. For example, in order to run A P courses, we're in a partnership, a math and, see, M I E, Massachusetts, whatever, whatever. I forget what, if you have the two letters, M I E. But there's a ten thousand dollar charge to be part of this partnership. Well, this year, nobody sort of really knew where that money was supposed to be coming from, because nobody had thought about delineating that in the line. So, now, it's in the budget as a contracted service for the high school.
So, I'm with you so far, because that's what I thought the goal was, too, right? Was to...
Right.
To have a line item for every single expense in the school, so everything is transparent. We know exactly how much it costs to run the schools. Now, what I'm hearing, or what I thought I heard, was, okay, now we know what the potential deficit is, so now we have to start looking at cutting. To me, it seems like that's the same philosophy we've always used.
Right.
So, it's not driving up to the goal of the zero-based budgeting. When I was thinking of zero-based budget, I was thinking, now we have to find sources of funding so that we can actually run the schools and stop doing it the old way. But as we sit here, it feels like we're doing the exact same thing. Now, we got to start cutting again.
So, again...
So, I'm a little confused, I guess.
Well, the last time, the last time we went to visit with the Finance Committee, they were pretty clear that minimum net school spending plus the three oh five, unless you were going to go after an override, was all they were going to bring to the table. So, the question then becomes, because that's really the only other funding source you're going to get for operations of your school system. There is no...
What is that this year? You know, what, approximately, do we know what that's going to be?
The minimum net plus the three oh five is five million, four fifty-three, five eighty-six.
And yet, we're, this is a different discussion, though. That, that, that argument from the Finance Committee was based on the old way of budgeting, backing in as we, as we typically do. Now, we're having a different conversation, because what we're saying is, this is what it costs to run the schools, not that. This, this is the conversation. Do you see, do you see where I'm going with that?
Yeah. It's giving the Finance Committee to come to the table and say, "How are we going to solve this problem?"
But before we start saying, "Okay, now we got to cut, cut, cut," I think we need to pause and restrategize, and, you know, we are the ones that have to change the conversation.
Right. The one, I completely follow you, and I agree, but one thing that I'm still not sure about, that's what I'm trying to understand. Some of the additional resources that we heard about last time during the presentation, that we need, you know, an additional person here, additional person there... that we need, you know, an additional person here, additional person there, we're going to reinstitute the, one of the custodial support positions. We did not have those last year. So if we can get into the conversation as to, okay, what happened when that position didn't exist? What happened and why we are now going in the direction of reinstituting? Same thing with the special ed position, same thing with the, I think there was a remedial position, whatever that was. If we can just put all those together and just explain why that is going to happen, it's a better story for us to follow.
This is, this is the point that I was trying to make two weeks ago. We have to understand and, and be able to articulate what's going to be different if all of these changes are made. And so then we can have that conversation with the finance committee and the select board and whoever else we need to have the conversation with.
I agree.
So what we're doing right now is we are creating a narrative. So I, I just want to be very careful about sitting here saying, singing the same song, basically. Oh, we got to think about cutting it. Now we got to back into this budget again. So that's all I'm saying.
I mean, there are two ways we can do this. We can certainly construct a narrative or we can say, this is what we need to run the schools and why we've done the asking for certain things. And then say, if we have to back into a number, this is what comes off the table. So that, you know, because what I heard at that meeting with the FinCon, correct me if I'm wrong, because it was a long meeting, as I recall. But what I heard was, minimum plus the three oh five, unless you want to go for an override.
Well, yes, again, but, but that is based on, on the old philosophy, the old narrative. So that, that, in, in, in the FinCon's defense, it's, of course, they're going to be saying the same thing because again, it's up, it's up to us to change the conversation.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm hearing you correctly, then what I'm hearing you say is that you would prefer to have the narrative for why these extra funds are needed versus how are we going to close the gap?
And, and what happens if, if we-
We have to have.
And what happens if those changes don't happen?
Right.
So if we don't-
So we need both sides of the, of the coin. Okay.
We are changing, we're changing the paradigm, basically. It's not going to be an easy road. It's going to be an uphill battle, just so everybody's, I mean, I'm fully aware of that.
But we do need to be able to, to be more clear when we're, when we're talking in the community, so.
Absolutely.
If we don't, if we don't understand, you know, what, what I'll hear out there is, you know, you're asking for another, this much money. Why?
Absolutely.
And I, and I need to have an answer for that.
Well, that, that's why this started two weeks ago. You know, we have to, we have to justify how the schools are going to operate differently, what's going to be better, what's going to be better, what's going to be different? If, if we got the additional, again, I'm not, I don't know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I-
But I, I completely agree. And I guess what we're saying is that in the old way of thinking, we had more or less an idea how much each building was going to need. Maybe we just increased that by a factor, whatever the factor might be. We just put it all together and here's our estimate for the budget. The nice thing is, we're in a position now to say, this is our bottom-up budget. We started from scratch and built, built that. And I'm completely good and I understand and I agree with what you're saying that if that's where we get, we can't now just say, you know what, we started this new way and then just, we're going to start across the board, cut everything with, with, without any regard to what it's going to do to the programs. But again, I might be off. Last week when we did building-by-building presentation, there were some additional positions that were added.
Yeah.
If we can understand what those mean, why they're now added, if in their absence, things actually were working this year, what's that's going to do for us? We're talking about, you know, sending a couple more students out of district. So, you know, if we're going to do that and increase special ed on one side, doesn't mean that we have more students now who are in need of that type of service.
Well, again, you, the, the monies that would be used to establish the program here would come from savings of sending students out. So there'd be like, there would be four students that come to mind, right off the top of my head, maybe even five, that we would bring back. But that would not be off the bottom line. It would be just to fund an in-house program.
That's in the short term.
That's in the long term.
Well, what I'm, what I was going to, where I'm going with this is, in the long term, and I don't know, maybe this is totally idealistic, but in the long term, I'm thinking, we create a fantastic program. And that's just a draw for more students, you know, for more parents to want to send in their special needs students. Or, or if, if, if people are hearing in other communities that we have more of a focus on social and emotional needs because we know that this is, this is the shift, right? We're only attracting more kids into the district. So we have a short-term problem we're trying to solve and we also have a long-term goal, right?
Yeah, I agree.
And if we didn't fill that program, there could be the potentiality of Belt Town, say, for example, tuitioning somebody in. Wouldn't cost us any more to deliver the program, but you would be getting some revenue.
We have to start thinking very differently.
Yeah.
I just go back to the, excuse me. I'm just trying to, I know I didn't see the blur of the, the short, and I was listening to the principal's talk, so I was, I I might have missed something here, but I'm trying to look at the, the overall staff, which is the first thing. Because it's the staff in the school district that makes what we have and so and so forth. So if I have this correct, and some of it correct if I don't, that the high school was going to add, talked about adding Latin. So he told us about adding a point-five Latin teacher, adding a point-four middle school art.
Yep.
Yep.
So that's, that's, that's really, at that point, that's less than one FTE, unless I missed something. East Meadow wanted to add half a para, a one-point-oh sped teacher. That's really only one and a half, and they wanted to put a stipend for, for the sped team leader. Which, and that was by contract, you know, a couple thousand dollars or something. West Street was going to add a kindergarten teacher and a grade two, so that's two. So, but looking here, it seems like it's a, they have a lot more than that.
Well, this is not just staffing. Those lines are-
I know, I know, but then, then what else could that, I guess I need to see the backup for that.
Right.
To break down for that.
I mean, in, in those numbers are technology numbers that David talked to you about, you know. The fact that rather than running ninety-nine percent on donated equipment, that, for example, we're trying to also think programmatically. So for example, at the high school, if Clay Hennessy offers an AP computer science class, there is a certain netbook that needs to be purchased. So you can say, go forth and, and do a program, but if you don't resource it, what's the point? What's the point? I mean, the whole business of offering AP programs is contingent on being part of this partnership. Well, the partnership costs ten thousand dollars. That was never articulated in prior iterations of the budget. It was just sort of like, somebody thinks there's a magic money tree somewhere and a ten thousand dollar bill showed up on my desk and I said, and where have we budgeted for this? And nobody could answer me. So those are the kinds of things that this budget hopefully is going to avoid for Cheryl when she's saying, have we budgeted this ten thousand dollar invoice I'm about to sign off on? You know, or these netbooks for an AP computer science course, have we resourced that? That's what we're trying to do, is make those connections between program and program costs and saying, this is what it costs and this is the line it goes in.
So, so the long term, again, the long-term goal in all of this is, hopefully, every year, we're not going to be looking at such huge deficits.
Right.
Right? Because everything is budgeted and it's on there. So we're not, we're not year by year going to have to back into a number. And of course, there's going to be unforeseen things that go wrong. Whatever, a roof leak or who knows. But that happens anyway in any budget. But overall, it's all going to be in here and we're not going to be chucking and jiving like we have to do every year. Right? That's, that's the long-term goal.
If it works out that we approve these, the budget or whatever, and if it's, if it's increased a bit because of an additional teacher or point-five teacher or whatever, and that's what we want to, that's what we want to tell because that's what we don't have presently. And that's what the finance committee comes from, you know, what's it going to look like different? What's going to be different? Or why do you need this position? If you don't have it, what's it going to look like? Those kind of things. And I know the supply account can change each year because the kids go down and hopefully you're going to save money through the Hampshire County bid that, you know, the district saves a lot of money all the time. Those are the things that are going to come up. Or they, or they putting some other physicians in at the expense of some other ones, which we don't know either. Somebody else going that now we use that money for something different.
Still a little bit of that going on in terms of, we still haven't settled all of the dust on this. You know, there are still things happening behind the scenes that we're working on. But other additional positions too, Jim, was a halftime custodian.
Where would that be in here?
That would be in plant operations and maintenance. And also the addition of a maintenance worker. Right now, we're sharing Dave Turcot with the town to get another Dave Turcot into the mix plus a halftime night custodian. So, you know, again, those, those things are in there because what we're doing right now is we're sharing a night custodian between this building and East Meadow. And it's not working so well.
Two things that I actually, I still am not sure I understand, Judy. One is that the version that we saw two weeks ago and this one in FY15, all funds, the difference is one-point-two million dollars or so. It was ten-point-two sixty-nine, and now we're seeing eleven-four thirty-one. So I, I, I completely understand, but all these items that we're talking about, I assume were already included in the version that was presented two weeks ago. What caused that huge increase from that vision?
Because I took things that were offline, quote-unquote, and got them into the all-funds numbers. So you could see what it looks like. What has happened in the past is that, for example, specials were all paid for by school choice. They still are, if you look across the chart. But their number is sitting in the all-funds number. It was not sitting in the all-funds number before. So I've tried to say, in the all-funds number, this is the actual cost of running the district, including the people who are being paid by school choice or grants or whatever. They're in that number, then we siphon off those other expenses and that becomes your LEA number.
And that is actually, that's a great segue to my second question. The old way we did it, again, just, you know, almost a lump sum, we said, this is probably what it is based on a five-person increase to a person increase, whatever it was, we put it together. And we ran a school system with that. Now, what we're saying, we're actually seeing a clearer picture because we did line by line, which leads me to then ask, how do we, how do we run this place last year, the year before, that if we were actually running with a budget that was anywhere from, I don't know, five hundred thousand to eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollars?
We kept having to ask for more money, that's how.
Right.
But there's, there's no guarantee we're not going to ask for money on this one either.
But I mean, we weren't, the thing is, is because it wasn't being budgeted in a good way, we kept having to go back because things just-
But those were related to special ed stuff. I mean, just the, the big expense items that come after we finalize the budget, they're related to special ed, which, you know, we go to the town and we ask for the money and I think that's, that's all understood. What I'm trying to understand is, based on what we are seeing today, if the picture is telling us that we are one-point-one million dollar different from last time, say about eight hundred thousand dollars or so of it is real change in the budget, how are we making the ends meet with a deficit? Where were we finding the money to run the system?
You weren't. You were going back to the town. You went back to the town.
Not, not for eight hundred thousand dollars, though.
You, you went, you've gone back, well, historically, you got a lot of special town meeting, warrant items, you know, stuff that's sitting in the back end. I'll give you, for instance, building repairs for FY16, thirty-two thousand, nine twenty-one. You keep asking why we overspend in that line? John is estimating a hundred and eight thousand dollars in building repairs that need to be made next year. That's why you were over-expending, because you weren't budgeting properly.
But this is not, is this inclusive of, but some of that money must have been coming from other accounts that were underspent. It's obvious.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. The difference here is that we didn't ask John last year to tell us what it would cost to repair your building.
Well, there was no John.
Well, the point is.
The point is, the point is that the question wasn't asked last year. It was asked this year, so that's why it's budgeted in here. That's the difference. Now it's, it's budgeted in as, as, so, so six months from now, John is not going to be asking for sixty thousand dollars to do something because if, now if it's not in the budget, it's already been budgeted for. So, so, so what his repairs are, are going to be what he put in that budget. Unless something goes radically wrong, right? So then, so then you play that out and the difference is, a couple of years down the road, the stuff that's budgeted in here, you're going to start seeing improvements in the school. You're going to start seeing repairs that have, that are long overdue.
And citizens will see that as well.
Yes, we're going to start seeing some of the fruits of this budgeted labor.
Yes, and I have no problem and I completely agree. The thing is, that money is going to come from somewhere. I, I, I would love to see all these improvements to, to take place and all that.
Well, last year you asked for, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars at a special town meeting just before I arrived for building repairs. Because you had budgeted thirty-two nine. So you asked for what John is asking for, you just didn't ask for it during the budget process. You asked for it later.
Yeah, because those were some repairs that had to occur in the heating system at West Street. Forty-something thousand dollars, if I remember right. We had to ask for that.
So I guess-
That's going to happen.
We're having a nice conversation and in our hearts, we hope that, you know, there is some way to find this money and to pay for all these things, especially since we started a new process where we are identifying the needs item by item. The challenge is, again, as you said, because we promised that starting this year, we're going to be minimum plus three oh five.
I didn't promise that. That's what the finance committee-
We did. We actually, we, we said, this year we are coming to ask for this amount. And next year, we're going to go-
No, 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 no. What we promised was that we were going to be doing things differently, that we were going to a zero-based budget. We never said we weren't going to need-
We said we would ask for an override if we are over that amount and that, that came, and that came multiple times. I mean, doesn't mean that we can't get the money, but the town has to give it to us. Before, we were talking to them and we were actually finding a way to put the budget together in, in collaboration with them. So it wasn't always that minimum plus three oh five. Now, the understanding is, you can do whatever you want. We can have a, you know, two million override if we want, but whatever falls outside the minimum plus three oh five, it has to be an override. We have to ask the town to give it to us.
Well, that's what the finance committee said. I, I never agreed to that. Just watching and all that. That was not something I agreed to.
I'm so sure we, yeah, we didn't agree to that, that we would go for an override.
Well, then again, just, you know, if, if it is their understanding, which I heard, I don't know if, Jim, you heard the same thing.
Don't worry, talking about it.
If that is, if that is what it is.
Additional money, it'd have to be an override.
We talked about it, but I don't recall the school committee agreed.
I don't say we trusted it.
It doesn't really matter. We didn't have a, we didn't have a comeback answer by saying, yeah, we're going to, we're going to find it somewhere else. We didn't have an answer like that.
Because, because this process was not undertaken at the time. We were still-
And some of your narrative building, now that I think about this, can be around some of these special town meeting articles. I will go back and do some research around articles. How much have you asked for that's been offline from the budget in a special town meeting article?
Again, what I'm saying is that I, it's not that I disagree or don't want to have this money. It's that whether it is presented as, let's stay in that here. Whether it presents something that says eleven-four thirty-one plus in-kind, I don't think in-kind is in this one, right? Just that we-
I have last year's in-kind numbers. I, you know, I, but I don't have new numbers that have been requested.
But, you know, just in one way, just comparing apples to apples, last year, this view was showing 10.4. This year, it's 11.4, so close to a million dollar difference in all funds. Granted, part of it will come from grants, so when you look at LEA, we're seeing about 700,000, 750,000 dollar gap. That's, so whether, whether we say, and finance committee says, you know what? You guys are good. We're gonna actually present a budget that is 11.431, or we go with whatever we're talking about. It has to come from the same source. It's coming from the town. The narrative has to be so strong that we can explain this fusion piece, that's what I'm saying.
What you would be asking for is the 10, 10,60,687, that's what you'd be asking for from the town. You would not be asking for the 11.4.
Say it again, how much would we be asking?
You would be asking for the 10,60,688 in assets. You wouldn't be asking for the 11.4 because the 11.4 includes.
The grants.
Grants.
Okay.
Revolting.
Alright. Plus the in-kind, which is still, you know, comes, comes in, goes out, it doesn't maybe.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a financial watch.
Yes.
So what's the gap then?
The gap is.
The gap is 347, let me get down there.
Yes. Okay. So where's the half a million coming from? You said half a million more.
How, where do you see the, I see 9.3 million from FY16 LEA. And I'm seeing 10.06, uh, 10, yeah, 10.06 FY17 LEA.
Right, but some of that's being paid for by chapter 70. You've got 4, 4.5 million, that's chapter 70 funds, and the rest is from the town.
So, so the actual gap right now is 347, seven and change.
Yes.
So let's not forget more than it is, Emory.
Which is less than, which is less than we were hearing the last two years. Do you remember?
Yes.
Way less.
I, I'm looking at this.
What was our chapter 70 last year, Judy?
4.5 million.
No, you're right.
And what is it this year?
4,557,815 last year. This year, it is 4,573.
It's 20,000, not even 20,000 dollar more than last year. How, how does it make up for all that? And that, I'm, I'm getting confused, or maybe I'm confusing myself here.
Yeah. Yeah, don't worry so much about the FY16 numbers. Look at your FY17. There's FY16, again, we're a little bit almost comparing apples and oranges. I would say stick your eyes on the FY17 lines.
The word gap is really all I care about.
Right. It's the gap between where, if you look at that minimum net school spending plus the 305 override, and what we're asking for from LEA funds once you take off chapter 70, the gap between what we would be asking for from the town and what the finance committee deems is what they give us is 347,000 and change.
And, and you mentioned a few moments ago that this number could actually go down, right?
It might, depending on where things, you know, I've still got some, some things that are up in the air. But we've asked for a bucket load of technology. You haven't, we haven't put technology in the budget since who knows when. So if I were to just take David's technology numbers in all of the buildings plus at central office level, I mean, that would be probably a huge chunk of it. You've got step increments, you've got lane changes, you're gonna have to have, you know, some cost of living.
Don't burst my bubble right now. I'm, I'm thinking optimistically and you're dragging me down now.
No, I'm just, I'm just being realistic, you know? You know, I mean, it, we've got a lot to, there's a lot of dust to settle before this is all done.
Do we have any other potential areas of savings?
Telephone, potentially.
That you haven't mentioned?
Not off the top of my head.
Any potential grants?
For operational stuff, there is no grant theory.
But, but we are having, we are having Guardian come in and do a full check on, on energy efficiency, so.
That's correct. With the lighting program, you have to keep your electricity rates up there because you're paying for the retrofit out of the bill, so.
But I mean, there might be other energy efficiencies that will happen.
Right. And I haven't done the net metering thing either because.
It's not happening yet.
Yeah. Again, that's all up in the air, so we've left electricity like net metering and, and, you know, the retrofit would come out of the bills anyway, so you wouldn't save any money for a few years on electricity. Eventually you will.
And the program you're talking about, that was also the boiler discussion and.
Right, yes.
We're on that, right?
Is school choice, is this the figure you're putting in for next year, 667?
That's correct, that's what.
How's that?
That came out of house one. That's out of the governor's budget.
Is that?
It's less.
Is that gonna stand up though, or are we okay on terms of the, are we, we haven't done anything with school choice yet, have we? We're not starting to advertise.
In terms of bringing kids in? No, we haven't done any of that just yet.
Cause everybody else is starting to do it. I've seen some athletes, I've seen others, so.
Yeah, yeah. Probably next meeting I'll have something for you.
May I ask for a favor? Can we just have something next to these numbers so that we understand what they are? You know, example of coincidence, under FY16 LEA, there is a line that shows 8.8 million dollars. Under it is 4.59. I mean, I have to really just go through and try to subtract things to make out what that means, if it means anything at all to us. There are some, some, there's some terminology here that I don't know whether it means the same thing that I'm thinking or not, like FY17 revolving. We don't have 1. plus million dollars in the revolving type of funds that I can think of. What, I don't know what that means.
Okay, I have to update that number. There's a formula in there, but let me check the formula, just to make sure that the formula is correct.
Just going back to another question, I'm sorry. On the front page that, I answered administrative services, it's about 75,000 dollars. What, what is that all about? What's, what's different there this year than this year? Isn't that just our business or who's factored in that line? Cause I see a lot of pluses and I'm trying to think of where we're saving the money.
Yeah, let me get there.
Okay.
Um, you have in there your payroll person.
Yeah.
Your food service contingency, you carry 10,000 dollars every year just in case something needs to happen to help out with that. Contracted services is in there for financial stuff. I took legal, legal services out and put it up in school community because that's really where it belongs. The big increases there are in the area of the district. Tech is in this particular cluster of accounts. So in addition to David's salary, he asked for a network technician. And he also asked for some summer help.
So that's, that accounts for some of that.
Yeah, so the district network technician is 40,000 more as an estimate. And then there's 104,000 dollars in tech management contracted services. And those are all the district-wide licenses for everything. Student information system, finance system, you know, our online recruiting system, Teach Point, anything that's a district-wide whatever, that services the entire district in terms of a contracted service. It was 67,000, it's up to 104. Because again, here's why, so you had some overages in your school committee expenditure line.
Yeah.
It hadn't been budgeted for appropriately, so people grabbed from other lines, which is putting it in the right bucket.
How about the supervisory that's up to, what, what's that line?
That supervisory is really special ed. So you saved a lot by having the two-headed special ed director. So I put in a placeholder for a salary that's probably about 20,000 dollars more than what you've been spending this year. Clerical, that's the salary for that, and the rest of it is pretty much level funded. And we counted the savings of having interim superintendent and interim director of people's services in the FY16 budget. That was how we backed into the number. So increases from going to interims to fully paid people.
Is there a soft copy of the March 7 version?
There is. I just need to make it look a little pretty on a couple of pages before I drop it. So that's why I didn't come your way electronically.
Okay, thank you. Is there any hope that the state budget may change in the right direction or?
Uh, Friday, we had our annual legislative luncheon with the superhannings roundtable. There is a move afloat to bring the chapter 70 number up.
Okay.
In both branches of the house. Steve Kulik, who's the vice chair of the House Ways and Means, mentioned it, as did Stan Rosenberg.
Okay.
A meaningful increase?
Probably about 25 bucks a kid. Now, whether it survives all of that set of machinations and survives the governor's pen, who knows?
So 25 dollars is a dirty. What is it to? 20,000, 20 plus thousand dollars maybe for us?
Times 800 kids.
21,475.
Is that right?
I did 859.
Alrighty. And if, you know, if you wouldn't mind educating me at the very least on, you mentioned that there were some things that were done on the side. They had either their own bucket that were excluded from the budget and whatnot. It seems to have made a huge difference between, again, the 222 version and this version. And I'm not sure that I completely understood that it could be lack of sleep or anything. But if you can help, help next time, maybe when we talk about the budget, what that means for us. I mean, when we talk about something that exists in its own right,
Right.
in a vacuum somewhere, then I, I'm wondering, okay, what is that? Is it, you know, parallel universe where there's some money somewhere?
Yeah. Yeah, and I think these are old paradigms, so budget work in Grammy. This is not the TMS way, I'm gonna tell you, from having, it's out on both sides of the TMS desk. We put it all out there. Everything is in all funds, whether it gets offset or it doesn't get offset.
Which makes more sense.
And, and that was part of the point in this whole exercise was, you know, cause as a school committee, we didn't understand how we were coming to this number. Now we know what the number is, or we're, we're getting close to knowing what the number is.
But I would say you're one step ahead of me then. I'm still not there.
No. Yes, because this is a process. But the point of the process was to understand just how much it costs to run the schools.
Yep.
And to run the schools in the way that we want them to be run to meet our mission statement and our, you know, our strategic plan, not in the way that we've always been doing it.
And not only that, but this way administrators understand exactly what it takes to run their own school. It's a big difference than before.
And I, and I also think that their expectation was, there was a point in all of this too. It wasn't just to torture them into, you know.
Right, but it was a case of, you know, like I say, I got that in my EVIL for 10,000 and I said, where did we take this from? And I got a whole lot of, well, uh, it's gotta come from somewhere.
That's happened a lot, I think, the last four years.
Yeah.
We hoped they were saving somewhere else, so that's why we were going back many times. That's why we were short money. I could tell that we were, I mean, I went whenever I went, we're going to a meeting like, and I wasn't sure. I wasn't sure that that's the extra money we needed because I think it was taken from those other lines. And all of a sudden, well, we need more cause there's an app. But really, I hate to say it, that was probably not the true case. Because they weren't watching what was going on. We just spend, 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 and then we'll catch up with it later and that, we're still paying for that. I think that's what you run into, I'm sure this year.
That's what I've run into with this year's budget. I mean, I came into the middle of it and last year, and basically we backed into the number cause we had to at that point in time. But I wasn't clear about where everything was.
Do you feel clearer now?
Absolutely. I feel like I know what this budget's about.
Okay.
This year's budget, not so much.
Last year's budget, you mean?
Yeah, well, this is the one we're living right now.
No, 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 no. Fiscal 17, you're feeling.
Yep, like I know where things are, where they are, why they're there.
Okay.
So increases in technology so that we can offer an AP computer science course, net course, which is how much it would cost to do that. Okay, it's a one-time expenditure. But David's relying on donated equipment. Everything in this room is donated. He spends a lot of time getting extra donations so he can harvest stuff for parts, for things that don't work on the donated equipment he has. It's ridiculous. He spends a bucket load of time researching stuff. He does things like drives to Rhode Island to pick stuff up.
Yeah.
That's, that's such a waste of his time.
It is a waste of time. And that, that's, that's the other point that I was trying to get to two weeks ago. You know, what can he do with that four hours? That's what I wanna know. What, you know, I want him to expand his mind and think, you know, what could I be doing with all of his time?
He spends all of his time thinking how he's gonna save the district a nickel.
We're penny wise and pound foolish and we need to get out of that thinking.
And then he spends so much time, that's why he's here till nine, 10 o'clock in the night. It's ridiculous. We don't put anything that he gets, which is just not, it's not even, I, all the years I say, it's just not even fair for him to be here. It's not even safe. It's not even safe for him to be working around here in these places with nobody else around.
My mother god rest her soul, when she got aggravated with me would do this. I do this with David a lot. I look over the top of my glasses. I do it with her too, but.
So the reality is it's a work.
Every now and then she gets the mother one, you know?
If we want things to change, we have to change the conversation. I'm gonna say it again, we have to change the narrative. We have to change the conversation.
I completely agree. The narrative is a great thing to have.
I don't wanna butt after that. I don't wanna hear a butt.
The numbers are gonna be the topic of conversation and we have to.
Of course. Yes, of course. I get that.
I think we did a fairly good job even last year that, you know, we explained why we were asking for the, for the budget that we were asking. And hopefully it is what's expected from us this year and that should be the standard. They should, they should, what we're doing should be even better. They should, you know, I don't know that that should be the standard. There's a lot of room to improve. I'm just, I'm just gonna do some more homework and try to better understand what, where the numbers are coming from. I'm not sure that I'm clear and.
Judy, if I just ask, I remember each, each person presented a couple of weeks ago had their little board up there. And could you email that to us?
I think she, you dumped that into something, didn't you?
Did it go, I don't, I couldn't find it, maybe it's me too. Maybe it's already there and I just didn't find it.
Let me just look. And I said I would dump it and whether or not I actually did.
Not just that.
I know we talked about it.
It's another thing. They're saying you'll do it and there's.
Well, I know you will. I tried to just ask again. I'm not being critical, just.
Well, one of my labor reports will tell you, I've been spending a lot of my time.
She said block for.
Up to my eyeballs in it. Drawing in it.
I don't see it.
No, I don't see it either.
I probably didn't drop it then. That's my fault. I apologize.
So what do you, make a note, that's alright, we don't need it right now, but we'll think of it again soon. That might help us as we look back at each. Cool. So I'm still confused. I know the high school principal asked for a lot, but yet if you look at these total figures in here, it's 100,000 dollars less than this year. So I'm saying, well, how are we getting these new positions?
Okay, well, here's another change.
Unless something else is safe.
Right. Well, here's, here's another thing. Like all substitutes were budgeted for in the high school, 75,000 dollars.
That's right. I agree with that.
But that's not how it's supposed to be. So I just dippy for the sake of argument, a third, a third and a third. Now I've gotta do some research to massage those numbers because I think it's, it's more here than whatever. So there was a decrease there because I put 25,000 at East Meadow and 25,000 at West Street, just as a placeholder to say, we should be budgeting for subs in each school, not just the high school. Don't ask me why that happened, but it was the way it was. So again, I've done some of those kinds of shifts. So yeah, there's a little decrease in the high school because some things, also that district miscellaneous, that's all under the high school right now. Why it's coded there, I don't know. But it shouldn't be. And particularly as we move forward into software, district miscellaneous should be in the district budget. It should not be in our school building budget, nor should all the subs for the district be in one school building and not the other two. So those are some of the shifts that I, so that's why the high school budget is down because there were things that have, that are still, until we make the shift into software, are still inappropriate. are still inappropriately coded.
Speaking of SoftRight...
Speaking of SoftRight, we have come to an agreement about what we think a chart of accounts would look like, so it's now just to get the grunt work done to do that. And then to, I know Chris has had a conversation with SoftRight about us, because it's hosted on the town server, so from here, we would have to VPN to the town server. So he's working with the acuity company that both the town and the school use for some of the net, network stuff, to make that connection happen, so that we can get into the town server for SoftRight. But here's some of the advantages, too, other advantages of SoftRight. Purchase orders will no longer be paper. They will be electronic. We will put a safeguard in that should somebody try to over expend a line, we're gonna get stopped. And there's gonna have to be a transfer, and that's probably gonna have to be something that you're gonna have need to look at in your policy manual around who approves what kinds of transfers and when. And we have in TMS land some policies from some different districts that you can look at, because prior to now, people just sort of spent, and so long as the bottom line was fine, everybody was okay, but, you know, again, we have lines and deficits. And I don't know about Cheryl, but I'm way too OCD Quebec and stuff.
Are transfers frequent, common, infrequent?
They are common. I will say that. Because this is a snapshot in time. When you start this budget on July first, it's a new day. The picture that you voted in, you know, May-ish to get to the June town meeting, that picture by July one will change. So, yep.
It's a plan, but...
Yeah, and I think it is. It's a plan and the plan changes. I think as the district gets further down the road, what TMS will be able to do for Cheryl is to be able to do some three-year projections, so that you're not having to go back to zero every year. So you can say to a principal, "Gee, here's your three, here's your, your last three-year spending and your three-year average. And in this line, you're always underspending, and in this line, you're always overspending." So rather than do transfers, let's just make the budget work that way. So at that, you know, and once the dust settles on this process, you'll start to get that trend analysis that then Cheryl can use with the rest of the leadership team to say, "Hmm, looks like you need to put more money here than you were putting, than you're putting over here. So let's just flip it out of the gate, so you're not having to ask for a transfer."
Is it unreasonable to think that the superintendent would have to approve all the transfers?
Different districts do it differently. In Delta Town, the school committee actually approves every transfer. We did put a, finally put a floor in that the superintendent could do it without the school committee's approval. In East Windsor and Winchendons, the business office will do it, like up to a thousand. The superintendent will do from one to five, and then the school committee takes it from there. Winchendons actually is that the superintendent does it unless it's a transfer between salaries and expenses or vice versa, then it comes to the school committee. But if it's within the same classification of expenditure, the superintendent does it. So it depends on the comfort level. You know, I'll get one of my friends at TMS to pull some various policies that you can all look at and figure out which way you wanna go with that.
Cool.
Because I think that's part of the thinking right now, is because people don't have a clear sense of where the budget is, they think there's a magic money tree out there, and then it's like, oops, we're in, we're in deficit. We gotta go to the town and get some extra money.
Well, I would think that this process has illustrated to the principals that that, and to all the folks involved, that that's not the case. There isn't a money tree.
Right. You know, I mean, they've done like it's Christmas and I'm Santa Claus. You know? The branch may have to show up and pinch glue, but, you know, we'll try not to start there.
Well, they get their monthly reports, right?
Yes.
And what, what accounts do you mainly hold them responsible for? I just wonder if there's a change since I've left the district here.
Mostly they're discretionary, you know, supply lines and things like that. I'll be honest with you, I got a purchase order the other day with a note attached saying, "Do I have the money in this line?" So I asked accounts payable, because I didn't have the latest and greatest at my fingertips. And she said, "Oh, my gosh, there's more money in that line than you can shake a stick at." So I'm guessing that the monthly reports may not be being read
Not looked at.
as carefully. I don't, I'm just... Or people are so unsure, because it's been a shifting sand for such a long time.
Well, it's basically just the supply account and export account that they're responsible for. They're not paying their electric bills.
No.
They're not paying their heating bills.
Right.
They're not paying their staff bill, staff. They're not paying their substitute. Professional development, do they, you give them a line for PD?
Also, that has come from Title II A. Part of what I need to work on in this budget as well is that you have contractual obligations to people to reimburse. This technically should be in your budget. If it's a contractual obligation, it should be in your LEA budget. And I don't think it is. It's in your Title II A forms right now. But again, that's another old thing I haven't gotten to yet.
So basically, the principals are basically just have their books and supplies and...
Right, right. It's their operational expenses for instruction.
That's it. As it always was. Do they know what their, I'm curious, do they know what their electric bills are in the building? Do they have no idea to, to, to talk about, before we talked about trying to recycle or, I'm trying to save and shut lights off and see if they could make it savings with electricity?
They don't necessarily, they don't see the electric bills, because every, because this is another thing I have rectified this year, is I found that sometimes bills were going to schools and sitting on principals' desks, and then we were getting calls from vendors saying, "Hello, where are things?" So now all POs and all whatevers, I've had Nancy go through and say to people that they have to go to her attention. They are not to go to the schools and get buried somewhere.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other questions on the budget?
Thank you, Judy.
So, love the day.
It's okay. We're building this little plane while we fly. It's okay.
It helps, it helps us be able to talk about it better.
Well, that's, that's what I'm...
Nope, I'll work on all those things for you. No worries.
Thank you.
Uh, next is, uh, just the Director of People's Services search. Uh, we have this, a nice search committee of teachers, parents, and John Cabalo and Cheryl, who have been through the applicants in executive session. So nothing is out for public consumption right now, as it would, as it was with the superintendent's search. So we're gonna do some interviews on March fourteenth and March twenty-second, and hopefully at the end of March twenty-second, set of interviews, there will be the emergence of two to three finalists for you to look at.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you all very much. And that wraps it up, right?
It's, uh, old business, yes. You have two items left in old business.
Oh, no, it wraps it up in your section of reports and recommendations. So old business, we have the class of 2017 trip. We talked to them last time, but they had some details to provide us.
Yes, and since that has happened, there have been some kids who have decided that they really don't want to go at this point in time, and so there's not enough to make the trip viable. So they're gonna cancel the trip.
Is it too late to do something else?
They gotta come back with something, actually.
Well, they, towards the end of the year, they usually take them off for the day to High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut, for a day thing. I think for kids at, who are seniors in high school, they're working, they're in sports, they're here, they're there. To do an overnight trip to somewhere, it's tough for these kids.
But there's Six Flags and, you know, other places, just...
Well, I think they'll, they'll still go to High Meadows. I think this was just an extra trip on top of that. But I think it's just a case of kids, they're busy. They have a lot going on, you know, looking at colleges, doing all this other kind of stuff. And so several kids decided that they did not wanna go after all, so...
Okay, that's unfortunate, that they're not gonna have a senior trip, but if, when, when was this gonna be? In May, right?
May, yep.
So this is March. If they think of anything else, I'm sure they may just come back to us.
Well, I think the plan, the, the High Meadows trip is still on the books, and that's a day trip. So we're, that's sort of that last week, you know, when they're footloose and fancy free, we try to keep them busy and not in trouble, so it's a bonding moment.
Okay. All right, and we have updates on the water issue.
Updates on the water issue. In your packet, you got a copy of the plumbing survey that I was required to submit to the DEP. I got some email notes and some photographs, so I cooked them together. This was done by one of the environmental engineers at Mass DEP, Dan Leprad, and just talking about the various different pipes and what was going on. At the end of the report, I worked together with Whitewater to talk about an action plan, which the DEP does not necessarily weigh in on. They just wanna know that you're trying to address things. So the corrective actions are to try and maintain a pH level of seven point two to seven point six, which is within the normal range of where it should be. Once John works or Whitewater works together with the DEP, we're gonna take that troublesome sink in Room Ten at East Meadow offline completely. We'll remove the fixture and cap the pipe, worry about it when the new building gets built. So that will come out of service altogether. But because it is one of the testing sites, probably a classroom next door will be used and needs to be, but it has to happen with the DEP. The sink in this building in the kitchen, there are a couple of corroded, there's a corroded pipe coming from the hot water heater in, but John and I also noticed that the intake pipe from the well along the wall that goes into the sink is also pretty corroded. So we're gonna have a plumber come in over April vacation. John's getting a quote to replace not only what's coming from the hot water heater, but also what's coming from the system itself and get compliant piping. Because now they don't even use solder with copper pipes. They have these things, they just crimp on. So when they put the new water heater in last year, you know, you can see all the joints are all crimped in place instead of having some sort of soldering, so... The, um, there was a, a new tap put on the well at the pump house, because there was not a tap to get a raw, raw sample prior to about three weeks ago. So there's now a tap, but sometimes the chemical gets a little backed up, because there's an inlet pipe that needs to be replaced, so that's something else that needs to be on the list. The water meter at East Meadow, if you look at the photograph, it's pretty green. But I think, again, that'll be part of the construction. I talked to Whitewater about that one as well, and he said it was not a big deal at this point, because it's not a copper uptick at East Meadow. And nothing is systemic. Well water, lead levels are very low. Sodium and chloride tests are done every three years. We just ran a test on sodium and chloride. They're a little bit elevated, but the Environmental Protection Agency, the feds, don't really have a ceiling. They say that for sodium, it shouldn't be any more than twenty milligrams per liter. It's a little higher than that, but not terribly so, and it's not anything that's actionable. The chloride level is around sixty-three pre-treatment and after treatment. When it comes into the high school in the kitchen, it's like twenty-two. There's a suggested limit of two-hundred-and-fifty milligrams per liter, so we know we're even close to that. And that's probably just some runoff of road salt that's at the well. But I mean, it was nothing that the DEP seemed to be, or Whitewater seemed to be overly concerned about in terms of that. So there's not any major corrosive factor. The other thing was that after looking at all of the drinking fountains against the EPA's list of fountains that could potentially have lead parts in them, none of them were found to have any of those lead parts. So the bubblers themselves are in a good place. So we continue to monitor, we continue to flush, and the last draw we did, we did a draw after it sat overnight, and then a second draw after we let it flush a little bit, and the results were really good across the board, so...
Do we have an estimated cost on three and four?
On three and four?
The replacing the corroded copper plumbing?
I'm waiting for, something that comes from the, the plumber. But it, it really needs to be done. Those pipes are pretty corroded.
And replacing those inlet pipes?
Uh, the inlet pipe, I don't have a cost on that either.
So in summary, we were down to two that were, one of them was showing at level, the other one was high. The one that is high is gonna be removed completely out of the system anyway. We're gonna take that out. The other one we have to continue to monitor. And I think the, the, again, if there isn't a silver lining in this, is that we realize that there...
Please tell me there is.
There was a, well, I, I think there is that, you know, we realize that there's a gap in communication. And just now we have a safeguard. We have that lab that has this safety valve in a way. If something doesn't go out in the way it should go out, the report, a, a test result, they actually catch it. Because last time, and this is, you know, or this time, basically, there is a, there is a component of miscommunication with the state as well, that we need to address. That we did not hear about this. And this is something that I really, very honestly wanted to understand, you know, where did we drop the ball? And that's what, you know, Judy's latest blog actually said, "Hey, you know, it stops with us, the school committee, me and all that, we, you know, we take responsibility." But if a report doesn't appear related to any one of these public health matters, and thankfully, in this case, it wasn't an emergency. It was above the action level, but it wasn't an emergency. But if something doesn't show up that is required, I would hope that somebody just sends something to the superintendent or the school committee and say, "You know what, guys? It's been months just, you were supposed to send something to us." So that's a conversation that hopefully we can have. The nice thing is that I, at least for the most part, the conversations that are taking place with the DEP are pretty, pretty cordial, informative, educating almost each other about, you know, what happened, what didn't happen. So hopefully this will be a good way for us to plug this hole and then not to have it again. And thank you for all that. I know that it's taken a lot of time to do that.
You're so good. Now I want if you come test my water now?
Should I tell you the dream that this one had? She had a dream that I had gotten a degree in chemical engineering, so I could take care of the water. She went to my graduation and everything. Like, no. Absolutely not.
The robe, the hat, the...
Oh, my God. Yep. Yep, but I mean, we're well within, I mean, this last set, I should get another report probably tomorrow or Wednesday. But the last set that was done, the first draw, everything, pretty much with the exception of the sink in Room Two Twenty-Three that nobody uses on the first draw was high. After it was flushed, it was fine. And the room, even the sink at East Meadow was at twenty-one. After the flush, it was four, so...
And those aren't even drinking water anyway. Never happened there.
So the bubblers that we've been looking at, the high school bubbler on the first draw was two-point-oh, the second draw was four-point-oh, but again, way under the fifteen. The high school bubbler near the gym by the restroom, that was five-point-oh on the first draw. After being flushed a little bit, went down to three-point-oh. The East Meadow cafeteria bubbler was at three-point-oh. After a flush, two-point-oh. And East Meadow bubbler, that's around the corner from the office area, there was none detected on either the first or the second draw, and that had been at sixteen-point-zero back in October. So you've come a long way.
And since you had that funny thing, the other interesting thing in this process is that everything actually gets to be approved by the DEP. So you say, "Hey, you know, your sentence here is giving the wrong impression, because, you know, it's, it's this tense and that tense is gonna alarm everybody." So it has to, we can't just send something out.
Right.
It has to go back to the DEP. They have to approve, and they say, "Okay, yes, you're right. You can change that." So even just to come up with some of the messages that are going out, it's like three, four iterations back and forth, back and forth. So, so again, thank you very much. I just, you know, the other day I called Judy, I said, "Would you like me to get involved in this?" said, would you like me to get involved in this conversation because, you know, to the ordinary guys, like, you know, we should talk about some communication breakdown here. Judy goes, no, it's, it's out of control, we're just, we're doing it, and it's the third iteration already, just going back and forth. So thank you for that.
Listen, tired of talking about it.
But it's gonna be your profession.
I know, yeah, thanks. I'm already married to a chemist. No, thank you, I think. Two chemists in the same house, I don't think so.
Great. Thank you. That is our old business section. In standing reports, we did not have a collaborative meeting, so we're not, I don't have anything on that. Policy Subcommittee, Murray?
We're still working on, on search and J because it's gone awful long. And we're not even halfway through yet.
But the joke was that when we, when we started, it was longer, in terms of pages, it was longer than Judy's dissertation. Now we are actually close to her master's thesis, so.
Ah.
We took, we took a lot of stuff out.
Progress.
Yes. So I, I left the West Street Building Committee to the end. I don't know, I, I think I, I had a great night of sleep that night. It was, it was, I was grateful, I was thankful, I was happy, and, you know, I was happy for the kids, but I was happy for the town, so, you know, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody who actually came for or against, just to make their points known, their opinions known. I think it was a good dialogue for the town, just it allowed us to mature a little bit in our, you know, our conversation as well. But, you know, congratulations and, and thank you, everybody, if anybody else wants to...
Well, there was, I mean, I, I worked with the poll. I was there from like 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night or so, and I had signed off, so we'll do that, so I'm not gonna be part of it, influence anybody. So I was always at the end, just after people voted. And, you know, I know a lot of people in town, and they were just a lot, so exciting to see people after they put their vote in, especially parents holding young kids who are gonna benefit the most from this. That's where the biggest excitement was, you know, this little two-year-old that's gonna really benefit from this new building down the road, and just the excitement, and I was really overwhelmed too by 1600, 47, 4800, against. So that was very exciting, I think it's, you know, it was the right time, I think most people realize that, even though some people, you know, it's a stretch for them, but this is gonna be a great thing for the town, so a lot of excitement that day, and more to come.
Actually, exactly. This probably is almost the first phase or whatever phase it is, but after this, we're gonna have a lot more meetings because we have to fine tune whatever's needed, just like the conversation with the recycling program mentioned. So all the design has to be tweaked, some of the changes need to be made before it goes to the MSBA. And even then, at every such percentage, I forget what percentage completion, but there, there is a completion percentage, and each one of those are required to meet and then report to the MSBA, they have to approve it. So they don't just say, hey, you know what, we, we're gonna give you some money, here's what it is. They still keep a, a close, close tab on it, so there's a lot of work to be done, but it should be, should be fun work.
I, I, you know, one thing that should be said is the couple of groups out there, like Vote Yes for, for Granby Schools, that really did a lot of work educating people in the community and being on social media and getting signs out in the yards, and Jen Silva and I literally stood outside all day and both of us had hypothermia. But, you know, it was, the thing is, is I've done that many times, and it was the first time that it seemed people were in a good mood coming to vote. They were excited, they were waving and, you know, thumbs up, and it was really nice to see because, you know, groups like that, and the PTO did some, school council, but the Vote Yes for Granby group really put a lot of time in to educating, and I, they should be thanked for that.
Yeah, I got here about 10 after 6:00 that morning because of trying to get things set up for PD and all of that business. And at 4:00 or 7:00, that parking lot was full, with people waiting for the polls.
I was just...
And it was busy all day.
It was steady all day.
Yeah.
Just living, you know, on the street next door, I'm constantly driving up and down 202, and there was not a time when that parking lot was not full.
No, you're right. It was, it was steady.
I'm curious, Eddie, what sort of feedback you got from MSBA when they heard the vote was affirmative?
I haven't heard anything.
I would love to tell them.
Actually, I'm on their Twitter thing, I keep on getting, you know, messages about, you know, we're visiting this school and all that. They did announce it on Twitter when we finally submitted the design and they approved it, there was a last time. So I was actually expecting to see something, and they did not. They did not.
Yeah, I don't know who officially knows about it, whether that's the building committee or Alan Minkus, or who goes, I don't know.
Maybe they don't know yet.
Maybe they don't. Have to find that out. Yep, the architects are coming to meet Cheryl, she's gonna be spending Thursday afternoon with us, and also here for the NHS induction ceremony, so architects are coming in Thursday afternoon at 3:30, just to kinda get to know Cheryl a little bit, and as we begin to talk about furnitures, fixtures, and equipment and all of that stuff.
And recycling.
Mm-hmm.
And recycling?
Yeah. Food trays.
Food trays.
Dishwashers.
Follow through, execution.
Got it.
So that concludes our regularly scheduled program.
And now...
Yes, so now we have a executive session. We will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part 8.3, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. May I have a roll call, please?
DM, Pimarowski, aye.
Mary Lecourt, aye.
Karen Petrus, aye.